All right, at this time I'd like to call the Board of the Work Session, March 20th, 2025 with the Coffey County Board of Education. Need a motion to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna start the education first. Mr. Mobley, would you mind coming up?
I'll mind up.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead and join me in prayer.
Lord, thank you for the lovin' and blessings, Lord, and providing all the things we need and so many of the things we want, Lord. And I just so thankful for this board for taking their time to come and serve the families and the children of Coffey County, Lord. I just, especially this month with School Board Appreciation, Lord, we're just so honored to have dedicated men and women that come and serve, serve with heart the way they do. And I just pray over this meeting, Lord, I pray that decisions are made, are made with wisdom, Lord, and I pray that discussions, anything that's done and said is pleasing in your sight, in your name I pray, amen.
Amen. All right, at this time I'd like a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Johnson, second by Mr. Wade, any discussion on the agenda for the work session? All in favor? All right, Dr.
All right, well, welcome everybody, and it's School Board Appreciation Month, and we sure appreciate our board members and all that you do to serve and help us give an excellent education to all of our students in Coffey County. So we go ahead with the business that we have on the work session. We have a school update from Ambrose Elementary School, and we have Principal Randy Drew here to present all the good things happening at Ambrose.
Well, I appreciate that, Dr. Lee, some school board members. What I'd like to do right now is talk about the good things that are going on at Ambrose Elementary School. And I'm gonna do things a little different. Mr. Mobley, would you share some good things that are going on in your life right now? Hey, yeah, actually, this week we were able to visit schools. Dr. Lee led several of us out and were able to visit schools, and we started our week off great. At Coffey Middle School, visiting classrooms, and it was spectacular. We got to spend time with kids and see great things going on in classrooms, got to meet some teachers. We hadn't had an opportunity to sit down and watch teach, but really just a spectacular beginning of the week. Well, that is fantastic, that is great. Mr. Mobley, Mr. Preston, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and I appreciate if you'll share some good things with us going on in your life.
Well, first good thing is you asked me ahead of time. So anyway, but I tell you, good thing, I mean, honestly, it's, I've been on the board for a while, and I know we've had a couple of board members rotate off and on, but I'm grateful that we've got five faithful Christian folks that serve on our board and a very diverse makeup of our community to represent our community as we do the work on behalf of the children of our community, right? A lot of folks think our constituency is who goes and votes at the polls. We serve a very unique constituency. We do need the voters, right? We need their trust, we need their support, we need their property taxes. But at the end of the day, all of that's done, right? The votes, the support, the property taxes are done for us to support our children's education, right? It's a constitutional calling, it's something that I appreciate all of my board members for stepping up and taking that responsibility, and I appreciate our leadership team for being here, and then at the end of the day, appreciate all those classroom teachers. Those are good things.
Absolutely. Education is a calling, we appreciate you, all of you school board members and Dr. Lee, and we're gonna jump into some good things in Ambrose. If you go ahead to the next slide, Logan. Real briefly, Capture Kids' Hearts is really a fundamental relationship building tool, and it brings kids, students, staff members together. If you can look, we have our contract that these students create in the classroom. It's words that they hold each other accountable on, and they expect each other to uphold them, and they'll check each other if somebody gets out of line. Logan, if you'll click on that video real quick, and it'll kind of show you a little team building exercise that Ms. Norrie Putnam has done within her classroom.
My favorite animal is an elephant.
What is your favorite animal?
My favorite animal is a tiger.
What's your favorite?
My favorite animal is a tiger.
My favorite animal is a cat.
What is your favorite animal?
My favorite animal is a cat.
What's yours, Charlie?
My favorite animal is a wolf.
My favorite animal is a cat.
What is yours?
My favorite animal is a dragon.
What is yours, Colleen?
My favorite animal is a cat.
What is your favorite animal, Amy?
My favorite animal is a special type of animal.
My favorite animal is a shoe.
What is your favorite animal?
Jerry.
My favorite animal is a dog.
What is your favorite animal?
My favorite animal is a dog.
What is your favorite animal?
My favorite animal is a chicken.
My favorite animal is an axolotl.
What's your favorite animal, Lena?
My favorite animal is a chicken.
What's your favorite animal, Angie?
Remember to put your hands behind your back if you've already known.
My favorite animal is a hamster.
You did the last one? Okay.
So that gives you a brief icebreaker activity that the teacher incorporates, and just like we did just now, teachers need to do those relationship buildings within the classroom, good things as they enter the room to build and break down barriers that can exist. And it also gets kids, all the kids engaged, because you got kids that don't like to get up here and talk. This makes me nervous when I get in front of them, and just like we all have different things that we have difficulties with. So it gets everybody engaged, gets them wanting to participate, and breaks down barriers when you do have tough problems later on throughout the year to try to resolve them and get through them at the best we can, much like hurricane that we went through. Real quick, Logan, can you pull up our data real quick? I do want to mention that. This is something I really would like to highlight. Capture Kids' Hearts, you have survey data that goes out to parents, staff, families, students, they all rate you in terms of, on a five-point scale. And I do want to highlight the two right here. You have culture and climate, that's a 4.9, and family, that's a 4.6. Those, I'm proud of that because those are the highest in the county. And, you know, we don't reach out and say, hey, will you please fill out the survey? And it's much like when you go out to eat. You go out to eat and you have a bad experience, most likely where you're gonna go. You're gonna look at the bottom of that receipt, you're gonna fill out that survey because you had a bad experience. A lot of times when you do good or have a good experience, they don't fill it out. So getting that type of result, and then 4.4 from the students was tied first with West Green and another school in the county that they told us as well. So I'm proud of that data that came in that shows that it is a piece that the county put in, invested in, and it's paying off. That's gonna pay off in academics, it's gonna pay off in your discipline data to reduce that issues within the classroom. So I'm really proud of our students and staff for buying in. Logan, can you jump right back in on the presentation? So I'm gonna highlight a few things. We have two of our awesome Eagles, and with Capture Kids' Hearts, you have a word of the month each month that we recognize students, and these are two of our wonderful students, Ms. Cameron Clark and Dylan Garcia, that received awards for those particular months. So we do highlight month to month, we honor those kids on Facebook, we recognize them, and I think that's very important. You want to reinforce those positive behaviors and highlight them, that way those students want to be that student of the month. And that way you have positive behaviors in the classroom, reduce discipline problems, and have a great learning environment for students. Kind of going into some of the activities that we did, obviously First Responders Day was during the hurricane, so that was obviously a challenge to have. So how could we get creative to keep some of the same things that we consistently have at Ambrose? We had these gentlemen, fire, State Patrol, our county, our city, all law enforcements and our linemen that put in those time and effort to work during the hurricane. We hosted them, and it was very unique. Instead of our typical where we kind of do vendor to vendor, rotate kids, we brought them in, we fed them, and then we said, hey, we want you in the classroom. And that kind of goes into my next slide, Logan. We had them go into the class, the students wrote letters, incorporating writing skills and different functions to show appreciation, and it was amazing. Those men and women that went in those classrooms, the kids lit up, and I was amazed at engagement. And you had, you know, big burly firefighters in there reading a first grader kindergarten short, and it was awesome to see the engagement, the kids loved it. So it was a little different this year due to the hurricane, but nonetheless, I think kids got more out of it. They knew the appreciation because they saw those guys, the linemen, the police officers that had to get us back to on our feet after that, because it was a challenge for everybody. And that goes into our own superheroes. This was not required. This is our entire staff, and I mean, everybody showed up and showed out. We had over a thousand sack lunches made during the hurricane. We provided, as you can see, the last picture, we went door to door, got out, we ordered meals, and, you know, it's very important because a lot of, just like in our community, we do have a high poverty rate at Ambrose, and we wanted to make sure the students had meals, and people were struggling. So we had to figure out solutions, and I was just proud of our teachers and staff that came and showed up and said, hey, we're here to help, and there were the hands, and we got it done. So I'm very pleased to show that and proud of the group that, of what we did. Just want to kind of highlight some of our family fun nights in some of the pictures here. That's what makes Ambrose great, it's a family. Parents show up with their kids and get into the festive mood, and these pictures highlight some of the moments that we had so far this year. Another picture, as you see, that's, can anybody tell me what movie that is?
Inside Out.
Inside Out, that's all five characters, all the emotions. I'm fear. Our spelling bee, I'm real proud of these four students, you can see their names off to the side. I got one in particular I'm real proud of, she's my baby of four, and I was proud of her this year. All four competed greatly. We didn't get any places this year, last year we did, but I'm proud of these students for giving their best effort because I was nervous, more nervous for them. And so when you get on that big stage, Dr. Cunningham was running that, I was like, just praying in the heart. So these are our four spelling bee winners at Ambrose, and I'm proud of these four students. All right, going into some of the curriculum stuff, I just wanted to kind of show you a glimpse at some of the interesting styles and methods that some of these teachers are doing. It's not just in a book. These kids are hands-on, authentic learning for math. This is Ms. Haley Foster in third grade, and you can see that she's using kids as parentheses within a math problem. And so it's kinesthetic learning that gets kids active, and I'm a health and P major at heart, and that's my background with exercise physiology and all those sciences. So dopamine to the brain increases cognitive ability. I mean, it's just scientific fact. So when you get kids moving, engaged, and learning like this, you got teachers that are willing to have a little bit of chaos for more gain, you're gonna have a great impact. So that kind of goes into some of our, some of our data, we'll share a little bit, I'm proud of that. We've had increased growth in our content achievement, our mastery from year to year the past three years, and, you know, it's a challenge. Everybody looks at numbers, well, we look at numbers, but those are kids, and you gotta look at each individual kid and look and see what you're gonna do to grow these kids to get those results at the end of the day. So I'm proud of our teachers for thinking outside of the box and using different methods. It may be a little more chaotic sometimes when you're in the classroom, but I'm very proud of the work and all that they're doing within the classrooms. Eagle Cafe, I want to highlight them. If you have not voted, Ambrose is up for school trade for the state. So if you see it on Facebook, please like it. Ms. Amanda Robertson, her staff is, she's went door to door trying to find votes, and I said, hey, we're gonna figure out a way to get you there. So she's awesome, she's on the far right, Ms. Cece Merritt, one of our other lunchroom ladies on the far left, and we're blessed to have four amazing ones that get engaged. How often do you see lunchroom ladies dressing up for dressing days? So they get engaged, and it's awesome, the kids love them, and we do appreciate that side. Here's our Young Arthur winners, just wanted to highlight those. You can see the names to the right, awesome group, they put in a lot of hard work. We look forward to hopefully stepping up even more next year and get some okay RISA winners, but like I said, it's challenging. You're competing against the best of the best within our RISAs, so hopefully next year we'll have even better show than that. G. N. Abrego, he is our art calendar winner, and that is an amazing piece. Like I said, we all have different talents, and I did want to highlight that. Amazing artist, and we look for great things from him. And then lastly, I'll kind of end with this. This is like one of our big culminating events for our, for our family and community. I do want to invite you, board members, if you're available March 28th, and you want to come to our vendor event. We have different vendors, and I'll kind of list them real quick. We have Premium Peanut, Laster Farm Supply, M&amp;M Farms, Miles Berry Farms, Clement Show Cow, Denise Letterpaw with the Roasted Corn, Unison Wellness, Tate Farms, Berry Brother, Mogul Dairy Classroom, Bustle Show Pigs, Bill Show, Show Goats, Sears Horses, Daze Hunting Bees, Blueberry Farm, Coffey County Farm Bureau, UGA Extension, Pilgrim's Pride. We do a lot that day, the kids enjoy it, they get to rotate around in kind of a vendor-type atmosphere with the pilgrims. They get to experience chicken, or grill and chicken for them, hunting, Daze Hunting, we have hunting events. So they get to see the parts of our community that a lot of these children will grow up into and have jobs. It may not be, you know, an office job that they're going into, it's gonna be something that's, it may be more hands-on that their parents may have a farm. So it's a lot that they get to see, the things that are done with our community, and, you know, it gives them that experience that some kids may not get. So we're proud of that, it's a big, big event. The Mogul Dairy Classroom is gonna be interesting, because that's one that we tried to pull them, we didn't get last year. So we're gonna have a Mogul classroom, how to milk a cow. So it's gonna be very, very interesting, but we'll see how that goes, I'm praying for the best that goes. If it don't, please give us some grace, but those are the good things that are going on at Ambrose. If you ever have any questions, concerns, please come join us. We have open classrooms, open schools, you come check out any, any and all activities that we're doing. We have an amazing staff, an amazing group of office staff here that you see at the end. We're blessed, in Coffey County, we're blessed, Ambrose, we're blessed, and it's all about family, that's what it is, and it don't get much better than that. Thank you very much.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, that makes you one good in Ambrose. We will carry on with our meeting, and next on the agenda, we have the minutes from our last month's meetings, and you can take a moment to look over those, and if it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. And next, we have the, let's see, the financials, and Ms. Bradford, if you want to tell us about the financials.
Yes, sir. The first report here is our financials through February the 28th of this year. You can see the beginning fund balance for the fiscal year. We were at $29,653,557.59. Our total revenues thus far is at $55,798,282.42. Total expenditures as of February, the end of February, at $49,799,858.1. So for our fund equity as of February, it's at $35,630,972.68. This is our comparison report for the past three years. You can see as of the last month, we are down, but compared to last year, it's kind of a trend. The previous years were down slightly, but we're trending the same as we have, you know, the past year on that report. The report here is our report by, this is specific categories in the school system. The first portion is our revenue, and you can see that our revenue there is at the $55,798,282.42. Next portion is our expenditures by the different categories, with a total of, as of this time, $49,799,858.1. And our fund equity there, at $35,630,972.68. And this is SPOS 5, just because we're still expending funds out of this SPOS at this time. We're gonna expend all those funds. We still have some encumber, you know, POs that are open, and we will continue to pay our West Green facility out of this fund. And then the next one is SPOS 6, this is where we'll be posting our revenue moving forward. So for the month of February, the revenue was $848,393.43. Any questions, any of those?
All right. Since we're putting folks on the spot, I'm gonna give one question. What, if, I know there's been chat, you know, this legislative session, I know there's been a lot of chatter around about school fund balances across the state, right? Can you ballpark for the board, if state and federal funding was cut off today, and we had to operate on our fund balance, how many months of operating income, of operating?
Three or four nights.
Okay.
As long as the fund balance.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the five-year facility plan, and we've done quite a bit of work with this as of recently, up until this morning, in preparation for this meeting. So the first item is the FY25 capital outlay application for West Green, and we're asking the board to approve the resolution for amendment of the FY25 capital outlay plan for West Green Elementary School as presented with board consensus. The resolution will be included in the regular meeting on the consent agenda, and superintendent will present a resolution to amend Coffey County's FY25 capital outlay plan for West Green Elementary School. And you can see the resolution right here, whereas the Coffey County Board of Education has approved FY25 capital outlay application that includes additions, modifications, and renovations to West Green Elementary School, facility code 3052, building numbers 2080 and 2090, whereas Coffey County Board of Education is requesting to amend its FY25 capital outlay application by removing the following projects from the application. And I'll stop right there. We realized when we started receiving the funding for this project from the state that they had left in building 2080 for roof, HVAC, and HVAC replacement on 2090. Those are the two wings that we're keeping at West Green, and the HVAC on those buildings does not need to be replaced at this time, nor does the roof need to be replaced on 2080. So we're asking you to approve this tonight, which will allow us to update the plan with the State Department so that we're not receiving funds that we're not putting towards this project. So we don't want them to send us money that we're not supposed to be earning on the project. So does that pretty well sum it up, Lee?
Yes, sir.
I know you put a lot of time into this, is there any?
No, that's, I see, we just want to be in line with what we're doing.
All right, and then we also have a resolution for George Washington Carver Ninth Grade Academy, and superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution to phase out the current George Washington Carver Ninth Grade Academy facility as presented. Superintendent recommends board approval of the resolution for amendment of the FY25 capital outlay plan for George Washington Carver. With board consensus, the resolution will be included in the regular meetings consent agenda, and the superintendent will present information regarding the phase-out process of the current George Washington Carver Ninth Grade Academy facility, which will make the school district eligible for state entitlement funding for construction of a new George Washington Carver Ninth Grade Academy. So basically what this will do, it will phase out the old building, which will show a need for new facilities on that campus. So the resolution reads, whereas the Coffey County Board of Education has determined that the cost of upgrading George Washington Carver Freshman Facility 1603 is greater than state funding to replace said facility, as evidenced by the architect's cost estimates. GW Carver Freshman Facility will no longer be used for any K-12 school, whereas the Coffey County Board of Education intends to construct a new George Washington Carver Freshman Facility on the same site, whereas the Coffey County Board of Education, after consulting with the board's attorney, determined that public hearings to phase out said facility are in accordance with OCGA 20-2-260.1, and were not required. You would have to have public hearings if we were going to build the replacement school at a different site where the students would be moved off that site. But since we are building the new facility on that site, there is no public hearings required. And our attorney, Mr. Sid Cunningham, gave us a letter, a formal letter stating that, that we'll keep on filing. So approved by the Board of Education on the 20th day, March 25. Any questions about this resolution? We are, we are, as you note in the resolution, we're keeping the gym, that will not be phased out. That will allow us to earn state entitlement funding for renovations and modifications as we move forward down the line. So that will keep the gym on the state, on the state roster for receiving state funds. The H building, we are going to remove that from the plan, it'll be part of the phase-out. It's where technology is at right now. We'll phase that building out, but we're gonna keep that building because it will be used by the school district, and we just couldn't justify not phasing that building out because it's classroom space, and with building the new classrooms, we just couldn't phase it out. Mr. Mobley, did that, has that about summed that up?
Yes, sir.
And then we will be keeping the Rosenwald School building up front where the alternative school is at. That's a historic building, and we'll be keeping that, but that's not officially part of the state facilities register for that campus, so we don't have to do anything with it at all. Are there any questions about these resolutions? All right, well, if it pleases the board, we'll place those on the consent agenda. And thank you, Mr. Mobley, for all your work on that. And Ms. Bradford, I know you had to spend a lot of time with that too, but it was, it doesn't look like a lot to get to that point, but there's quite a bit of behind the scenes that Mr. Mobley had to navigate in the State Department. And I also want to say our architect does a great job helping make sure that everything's in line with the, with the George Department of Education, so.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In phase 9, we say you're gonna keep the Tate Building.
Yes, ma'am.
There's another building that goes down that wall right in front of the, what they used to call the E-Wing.
Yes, ma'am.
Will that E-Wing be taken down back next to the third wall?
That's what we've discussed so far, keeping the Rosenwald Building and keeping the H Building.
Okay.
But what the idea is, everything else would be demoed to make space, green space out in front of the school, to make it aesthetically pleasing, and just make it look good.
Okay, so that Tate Building will remain?
Yes, ma'am.
Next to the walls of all?
Because it was built in around 1995, or maybe even sooner, maybe even not even that old. It's built in the 2000s, 2005, something like that.
But this building that I'm talking about, it's about as old as the other building.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you're talking about F Building, which happened in the early 80s, and I'd heard it was built in the 40s. It's got an interesting architecture and the roof, and the rest of it, so it had been part of World War II construction.
Yes, yeah, so that's coming down too.
Well, I mean, that's part of the plan, yes, ma'am.
Because it's only four rooms, two of them is the same.
What we, what we did in Brockston, when we demoed the school in Brockston, of course, there was a lot of affinity towards the school with the people in Brockston. They love their school, and so what we did, we took some of the bricks from that, and we built inside of the cafeteria a wall memorializing the old Brockston school, and they put the cornerstone of one of the buildings in there, did something special. So what we talked about, we did the same thing out at Nichols, they couldn't quite do anything inside like that, but they took the old veil, and they took the bricks from the old school, and they built a pedestal for the veil to sit on with some of the old bricks. And then they also took some of the floor, I think, out of one of the buildings, some old wood flooring, and did a nice wall right where you walk. and did a, a nice wall right when you walk in, kinda memorializing the old school. So that's kind of what we talked about with George Washington. Certainly use some of the bricks and things to do some, some, uh, creative work inside of the building to try to memorialize the old school.
Or would it be feasible to get some of the, um, people in the community and let them select what they want from the old school to be set up, rather than us going in and saying, okay, we're gonna do this wrong?
Yeah.
That might not be.
Yeah, we could get some feedback from you. You could help us get some feedback and talk about what we wanna do. Yes, ma'am. Good question. Jardine Stadium scoreboard is, as we know that Hurricane Helene caused a lot of damage in our community. And, uh, we, the scoreboard at Jardine Stadium is damaged and is gonna have to be replaced. So I'm asking the board tonight to approve, uh, superintendent recommends approval to move forward with the purchase of an updated replacement scoreboard for Jardine Stadium due to damage from Hurricane Helene. With consensus of the board, the scoreboard purchase will be included in the consent agenda for vote at the regular monthly meeting immediately following this meeting. Dr. Lee should present a proposal for a new digital video scoreboard for Jardine Stadium as a replacement for the current scoreboard that was damaged during Hurricane Helene. We, uh, w- we're receiving approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars from the insurance company to replace the scoreboard that's damaged. So we would receive the fifty-seven thousand from the insurance company to go towards this project. And then I did talk with the Touchdown Club representative, Mr. Earl Mayo, and he, uh, said that the Touchdown Club would, uh, partner with the district and approximately thirty thousand dollar contribution towards the project if the board elects to do the project. And, uh, so they would have some skin in the back game as far as the Touchdown Club is concerned. And then I would be asking the board to fund the other portions out of East Plots funding, approximately a hundred thousand dollars. We have an estimate and it's on the, the screen up there. Uh, we have an estimate from a local vendor for one hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. And we're gonna have to go through a process to actually purchase the, uh, the scoreboard. We, we will likely have to do an RFP or some sort of, uh, bid process to get, uh, the best quote on the scoreboard or the video board. And therefore, what I'm asking the board to do tonight is to approve us moving forward with this project. And then we will go out and go through a process to get the best price for the best product that we can get. So the hundred eighty-nine is a estimate that the local vendor that supplied the school, the, the video board that's on top of the visitor side press box. That same local vendor gave us this estimate on putting the, the video scoreboard in. And so, uh, we would be coming back to the board, uh, to approve the final purchase. But before moving forward, I wanted to, to know that the board would support us, uh, moving forward with this project and contribute to East Plots funds towards this project.
Why are we upgrading that much? What's, what's the deal here?
It's when you go to a lot of the communities we're going to to play games, they all have these, these video boards.
Do you know any?
I, I know Carter'sville, when we played them in the playoffs, they have one. Calhoun had one, uh.
Yeah, I miss, I do.
Uh, Valosta has one. I think Brunswick, when we went down there, they had one. Uh, I'm pretty sure that, uh, Lee County, when we played them a few years back, they have one. It's just become a lot more common in your high school stadium. We could also use this for graduation. We could be videoing the graduation and put the, the picture of the student crossing the stage on graduation and, and put that up on the, the video board so that the parents who are there at graduation can see the graduate clearly. Uh, there's multiple uses for, uh, beyond just high school football. But it seems to be just the direction that, that your, your programs are going and, uh.
It's a lot of money for a sign.
Yes, sir.
How many games do you play out there a year?
Well, we play five with the scrimmage, usually about six games. And then we, uh, uh, if we make the playoffs, you know, you, you play some more games.
How much was the sign we got now?
If, uh, I don't have, I know the replacement is, is, insurance is giving us fifty-seven, so I'm not real sure, uh, what the total cost of the listing was. But, uh, it just, uh, if we have a chance, you know, it's something that we probably would be doing if it, if the current school board hadn't been damaged and had to be replaced. But, you know, since we're having to replace it, we felt like we would come to the board and, and go ahead and, and ask for, uh, moving forward to purchase one of these modern video.
Another hundred thousand.
Sir, yes.
A hundred thousand, what we have?
Yes, sir.
Probably remember we had that over.
We've had it five or six years, seven years, something like that.
In, in comparison to the, you mentioned the, the current vendor, the video screen sits across on visitor's side?
Yes, sir.
In relationship to the size of that screen, what is the size? Is there a difference in the size?
I think this would be about two times the size of that. And it does generate revenue for the, for the Touchdown Club and the football program, which helps all the other programs because when the Touchdown Club buys, uh, equipment for the football program, that helps us use those funds that we earn in the game football and be able to support our non-revenue sports. If you see any of our athletic teams, they all are well-dressed and they, they represent Coffee County well. And this, the revenue stream from this to the athletics will help fund, um, really all of our programs in different ways.
Couldn't they take that and pay for the sign?
Well, that's what they said that, uh, they would contribute thirty thousand, uh.
And that's about another hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yes, sir.
Now we getting fifty-eight for insurance.
Yes, sir.
And that leave us over a million or a thousand.
Yes, sir.
But didn't we pay for the old, um, screen ourselves? The Touchdown Club didn't help? Was the one that's damaged now?
Uh, the scoreboard, the current, yes, we bought the current scoreboard.
Nobody else.
That's right.
So now the Touchdown Club is gonna help.
That's right.
Coca-Cola donated it.
They donated on scoreboards that, from what I understand, they had donated in the past on the scoreboards. Steve is gonna track that down. He hadn't got an answer from Coca-Cola yet on whether or not they would contribute towards this scoreboard. But that may be some additional outside funding that we get. Uh, Coach Watt has been working on this for, for some time too, and just researching it. And, uh, so there could be some more revenue to go towards it from Coca-Cola.
Would the, uh, would the Touchdown Club or any other vendor, um, be willing to look at offsetting, you know, not necessarily immediately, but a portion per season for X number of seasons, right? Five thousand a season for five seasons, or five thousand a season for ten seasons, or something, something along those lines, to kinda help offset what we're asking to do. Um, and then the other question is, I won't even say question. I will say this, my daughter went through DSU graduation at night. And it's pretty cool to see a kid up that big. And we were sitting way back and, and it was flat, you, you know. And you couldn't, you know, she's up on a dais or whatever as they go across. But then when they do the, and you know, she's shaking hands with the president, Hank gets the diplomas, it's funny, you know, it's, it's pretty cool.
It'd be glad free from the sun. I'll give her, I'll give her a thing, if they gonna be able to rent spots, they like, you could set something up where they could reimburse the school system for that money. I don't know how that would work if we can actually do something like that from the proceeds, you know. I mean, I appreciate them offering the thirty thousand, that's still leaving us.
Yeah.
Maybe I don't know.
I, we can talk to them and see.
So the, the, what you're asking us to vote on tonight is to, you're not asking us to spend the money, you're asking us to open it up for an RFP?
Yeah, cause we need to get to moving on it. It's already March, it's April, May, June, July, August, that we play football five months. If we wanna have the scoreboard up by football season, we're starting to get pressed for time. So that's why I was gonna ask.
What's the turnaround you've asked on that RFP?
I have, we haven't drafted it yet. I didn't wanna, we'd do it if the board wasn't gonna support us on it, you know, so, uh.
I mean, if we do it, can they get it done in time? I mean, that's, I, I guess that's my next question is.
I don't know, but.
If they can't do it in time, will they lower the price?
I don't, I don't know. But, uh, so that, that's what I was putting before y'all, uh, recommending approval to move forward with purchase of an updated replacement scoreboard for Jardine Stadium. Do that damage from Hurricane Helene.
I mean, I'm just gonna vote, I don't think I can do that, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
What do you think, if you do it, you can't do it right now?
I wanna see, I wanna see what they can do, if they can help out and go pay for it.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about, you know.
So you can't do it right now?
Take, take part in the money, even though it does, some of it came from outside, it's still.
Yeah.
They could, they came up with some money, set up some terms to pay for it or something. But I mean, like I said, I'm just gonna vote.
Well, that's what I'm, I understand that, you know. I've got it on the consent agenda. You want me to break it off of the consent agenda and we can vote it separate?
I think that'd be a good idea.
All right. Gene, where do you see it?
I know the old school board, different businesses in town, there's names up on the board, and every year they pay money.
Yes, sir.
And that's the way that school board technically was bought. And then, I don't know if y'all replaced the one that was there. I remember J.C. Adams was mayor and he went around town getting people a sponsor, you know, like fifteen hundred dollars per sponsor, probably ten years.
Yes, sir.
Anderson, Pontiac, or whatever, so forth. That Trinitron across the way, top of the visitors.
Yes, sir.
Costs ninety-six thousand, six of us bought that.
Yes, sir.
So the beer was gonna cost probably a hundred.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, you would go to, to these companies around, they may be willing to.
Well, that's what they have to do, they would get ads, they would run their ads on board and.
And then that'd be good. They'd be willing to reimburse the money we invested in, I mean, we put nature of money in.
Yes, sir.
Already it's fifty-eight thousand. That's just one thing.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly explore all those options.
And I know once it's passed, we probably ain't gonna be much for it.
Yes, sir. We're gonna get, we're gonna get to moving.
I know how that works.
Get to moving on track.
You know, questions gonna pop up. We just spent so many thousand dollars on a baseball field, softball field. Now they don't wanna hit football. That's more.
Well, they used to don't have a problem sponsoring football. They have that.
You can't be hit.
So, yeah, but. Doesn't, Coffee County doesn't care.
Well, I know, like.
Can you remember?
One example.
Things are changing.
We've got, our news, our offensive lineman that, uh, they've got such big legs that they had to buy, uh, knee braces that, uh, I think that for the offensive lineman, the Touchdown Club paid eight thousand dollars for knee braces for the offensive lineman. I know they have to buy helmets and such as that. I think it's about seven hundred dollars to outfit one player. So it's an expensive sport and this would help generate the revenue for that that helps us then pay for some of the non-revenue sports that don't make much money, so.
Who would go about getting some sponsors and then?
The Touchdown.
We needed to go ahead and get on it and find out how much they could generate.
Yes, ma'am. I talked with Earl Mayo and, and what we talked about was thirty thousand dollars as they start to get the revenue to come in from the ads, then they would pay the school board backs up to thirty thousand is what we talked about. But, uh, you know.
So that's included, those ads are included in that thirty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that's, but I mean, it continues to generate revenue, we'll be holding the thirty thousand.
Yes, sir. And, and those funds would help us fund football, which would help really free up funds to go to the sports. You know, and high school sports have become, you know, we see what's happened in college sports. It's become a big business and it's trickling down to high school now. Whether we like it or not, that's just kinda the direction that, uh, football is, is going. So, you know, they're now allowing NIL money to go to high school players. And, uh, you know, GHSA approved that. And so that's just the world we're in.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll throw my, my piece in. I, you know, one thing we, we do wanna recognize is that taxpayer money cannot be used to outfit players, pay for helmets, pay for, uh, tennis rackets, pay for uniforms, pay for, for anything like that. We collect a penny in East Plots to go to things such as this. And a, a third of that penny comes from out of county. So if we could maybe go back to the Touchdown Club and ask them, you know, if they wanna do the initial thirty, and then ask them for a reasonable stream of revenue for the next five years off of each year's sales, whether it's a percentage or a flat rate. Maybe if we split it into thirds, right? Third, the insurance money, a third from the Touchdown Club's commitment, and a third from the East Plots. I, I could get behind that.
They're taking in about a hundred thousand a year. So they can do thirty a year for five years, that'd help out.
That'd be the whole thing. I'm not asking them to do the whole thing, cause I don't want them to take away from what they're doing for the other, other kids and other sports. I'm just saying.
It's a roundabout way to do what you say we ain't supposed to do. Is that right?
What's that?
Basically. It's a roundabout way to pay for uniforms and stuff without us doing it. I mean, if, if we put money up for a sign, that kinda plus we gonna get the revenue, then they can buy the uniform. But we not supposed to take the money.
I'm saying we can.
I know we can, that's what I'm saying, we can, but we.
I mean, if we could, I might want to.
It's a sound way to do that. Going around it to do it.
That's how we do a lot of things.
Ain't gonna do it on that one.
You've already done it, buddy.
Well, I, we'll, we'll break this out and vote it separate. And all this would do is give us the ability to go forward and then we could try to have some answers to those questions cause ultimately you would have to approve the final purchase, so.
That's what I'm saying, we're not approving the final purchase.
No.
Okay.
That's right. All right. All right, we'll, uh, we'll break that out.
It'll give us a chance to take a beating on both of us now, and then we'll figure out what we wanna do when it comes down to the PO. Yes, sir.
I, I think there is a sense of community of pride around our athletic programs and our ex- curriculars and our ag programs. And I think our, our young people benefit from our ag programs, our athletic programs, and co-curricular programs. This would.
Like you give the band so much squash money, you could do the same for the school board?
Yeah, we could use, it's a capital purchase. This would certainly be an appropriate purchase for the school board to use East Plots by the time. Yes, sir, there's nothing wrong with that. So, uh, we will move on to the next item. We have the, uh, let me see, I jumped over to the regular meeting to consent and pull this up. up. And the next item is technology, Thought Exchange. And Logan, were you going to talk about that?
Sure. We talked at the board retreat about a program called Thought Exchange where we're able to collect thoughts in an unbiased way and then have those rated to help aid in decision-making processes and set agendas for district planning. Dr. Lisa and I talked about it, how the tool can be very helpful and could save lots of time and help get improved feedback from, from all of our stakeholders that attend meetings to be used in many different ways and be used in this room at any time to take ideas like this school board, for example, we could throw that on the Thought Exchange, rate ideas and see what we come up with, use it throughout the year for all sorts of projects, even at the reset to get thoughts and all the superintendents or all the assistant superintendents curriculum about important topics. And so it's an AI tool that can help, help us in lots of different ways, put in surveys. It is a little expensive, about three thousand dollars a month. Here's a quote, I've got, it's a, adds a ten percent discount there, it takes away a ten percent discount for a total of thirty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. We've asked to purchase it now, we can sign, have the purchase set up to start on April first and run through for a full twelve month period and then if we choose to renew it, it would be in March of next year. Now, they do show an annual price increase of five percent. It is on an automatic renewal unless you give them sixty days notice that you're going to be terminating the license agreement. And so, take any questions or conversation about this product?
Can I, can I ask Chat G P T if it's a good idea?
Yeah, that's true. You can do surveys with it, sure can. It also has, one of the advantage I saw to working with this group is the people behind it, it's not a product that they just throw at you and say, go for it. They have a team of highly intelligent people that run this thing all over the country. They also have a base of knowledge that we can access from all over the country about problems or issues or things that come up that we're trying to solve as well. And so it's not that we're going to do what they're going to do in another country or another state or another county, but it'll give us a frame of reference. And so what that does is open us up to having greater input from around the United States and I guess in Canada too, they, they use that a bit as well.
Logan, if you don't mind me sharing, I shared this with you already, a couple of years ago when we were sorting data from our strategic planning meeting, Ms. Spaten and I took survey data, and I'm going to be honest, we worked two days working through counting the number of votes to prioritize. And when Logan did this at our most recent meeting, how long did it take to do what it took Allison and I two days, thirty seconds? Hurt my feelings.
Had we spent, had we spent the same amount of time with this data and Thought Exchange, it'd be amazing what you'd come out to. After you collect all the data, you can ask direct questions to the AI tool and drive all sorts of information from it. It's really amazing to see the amount of time saved, but also the analysis that, I mean, that's just ready to go at a click of a button. It really is an impressive tool and it is a sole source, so there's not another market. And so I'm in favor of it, I, you know, I was asked two years ago how AI will show up in, in the school system and it's showing up in cybersecurity, it's showing up in classroom, it's shown up in strategic planning, it's showing up on your phones, it's showing up in students, in classroom. I have another interest in AI for helping to alleviate teacher burnout and improve literacy. And so AI is showing up all over the place. I wouldn't buy this just for the AI, but for the ability to democratize ideas and take out that loudest voice in the room and put every participant on the, on an equal ground and footing. I think it's a, it's a quality product and it can take advantage of and with intentional use, really, really do good work with it.
All right. Well, if it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent.
Where do your funds come from?
General fund.
They come from the general fund?
Yes, sir.
This is a year renewal?
Yes, sir.
If you choose, you know, if we find that in nine months that we're not using it the way it should or it hasn't really helped out, then we don't have to renew it.
You renew it month by month?
No, it's a upfront payment.
General fund, we can get out of it.
Yes, sir.
Not next year, we won't have to.
Next year at this time or budget goes before this time, if we've seen that it's not something we can keep, we can, we can drop it.
We'll reassess in December to give the company adequate notice to terminate their data center space and, you know, set up that.
Please, the board would place that on the consent.
Board, you'll give that.
Proposed provisions to policy descriptor code J B C D, non-resident students. We discussed this policy previously and I'm bringing it back to the board for another reading. We, Mr. Cottingham has been reviewing this and making sure that what we do with it is in line with Georgia State law. And so what we would do with this in a nutshell is out of county students would have to apply to attend our school district and we would charge tuition to out of county students. The exception would be if they, their parent works for the school district, then they would not be subject to tuition. And there is also a, a phrase in here that would give the superintendent discretion if, if there was some unique situation that came up where we needed to waive this policy, we could. So I just felt like I needed something in there that could give us the decision, option to make a decision if there was ever a reason to. And.
If you don't live in the county, but you own a business in the county and pay taxes, you're not going to live there?
You, they would be able to attend tuition free. Yes, sir. Any other questions about this? We thought we would let it sit for another month and I'm not asking for final approval tonight, I just want to make sure with Mr. Cottingham that we, we have it just the way we want it before. And this policy was in place up until around two thousand and ten and then the tuition part was dropped. So all this would essentially do is, is put us back operating like we were prior to two thousand and ten.
You scroll down to the, where it talks about contiguous counties. Yep, the non-resident student is one who resides outside the district. Purposes of this policy, non-resident students whose family reside in counties contiguous to Coffee County, considered, how important is that next word? And. That word right there in that, in that phrase, how important is that word?
That was put in.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking you to log your, that log your little, log in this. And is important, not may.
It is very important.
Not may, not should, but and, so it's got to be both, they got to be contiguous to Coffee County and pay property taxes to Coffee County, right? Can't be one or the other.
There is some, I don't know if some, can I go back to Jason's thing just, but yeah, they, one, this was an act of, wasn't it, Brian? Somebody on, somebody lived on a county line.
It was act of, it was act of.
Yeah. And residents who relies outside the district. And they pay taxes there, should be exempt, but that's, that's a local thing there, that's not state law. That thing was added, I think it ended two thousand eleven, Brian. Yeah, it's, and. But Jesse, what was your point again, they own a business here, then would they be exempt?
They're paying taxes here. Yeah, all they do is pay a tax.
Who's that?
I didn't say whether.
Oh, and pays taxes, yeah, they're exempt. So you were saying on the business.
When we put that thing on there, five, two thousand and ten, we were in some lean times, was that time?
And y'all really kind of realized that you had one and weren't enforcing it. And so.
It wasn't, it wasn't. Not hit the whole lot, but we were trying to, you know.
It wasn't, it wasn't being applied.
But you mean, so she will have a business, but they don't pay property taxes?
That's right, that's why I want to make sure, your point, just because they have a business.
Pay tax.
Pay property taxes.
Yeah. Marc, can we make a note of that?
Well, that was what I was, when you said, you're telling me they own a building, they own their building, their businesses in in Coffee County, then they're, they're paying taxes on that. Somebody was just facing.
They own a business and pay taxes here, but they're non-resident. I just want to make sure what you got in, is that what you said?
Has there been any?
They own property in Coffee County.
Oh, they own property, okay.
They pay taxes in Coffee County.
Well, they have to pay property tax, of course.
They have to pay property tax. I mean, they own a business and not pay no taxes, they're already living, you know, they're living.
And has there, has there been any discussion about the amount of tuition?
We talked about.
Let you mob in before you go there.
Could you back up that paragraph on the next one that when he struck down? And residents are persons otherwise exempt from, is one who. Do you want that, Marc? Can I have that?
Yes, sir.
What was, I didn't, I'll look at that. I didn't know if it's dry camp. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's fine, we, we, Mr. Mobley, do you have any of that information in front of you, the, what those districts are charging?
Yes, sir, I spent a little time talking with some other districts across Georgia and then reading through some policies. Let's see, I apologize, let me pull this up. And I think we found ten or eleven counties. So the counties in Georgia that they just spoke with are found online. Franklin, Gwinnett, DeKalb, Henry, Dalton, Forsyth, Fulton, Muskogee, Lounes, Richmond, and Lounes was, actually was from two thousand and twenty. I spoke with somebody there. And then the city of Decatur, they ranged from twelve hundred up to like seven thousand in gen, for the, for the most part, it's around three thousand dollars annually, the average between most of those city or county school systems.
I had had some conversation with some of y'all one-on-one prior to this meeting and we, we talked about fifteen hundred dollars. Would be a number possibly. And I talked with Mr. Cottingham about that and his suggestions not to put the dollar amount in the policy, it would be an administrative regulation that we would impose and.
And put a better amount.
Yes.
Did not put it in.
That's right.
With there being the opportunity to make it relative to income, family income, if that became a.
That's where. Somebody, if they're, if they're standing, if they're, if they're in appropriate circumstances. And.
So this, this is what we're asking about, you're asking about?
No.
That's what I'm saying, you're going to put it out for thirty days?
Yeah, let's sit until next meeting, make sure we have it the way everybody's comfortable with it before we approve it, so, all right.
And all state law requires is a full-time employee and you're not making it be a full-time employee by that second paragraph of it. And also just that, out of, non-resident employee, full-time employee can go to that school and you're legally not limiting them to that school as a policy.
You're going to grandfather them on, follow them here.
That's what we're talking about, yes, sir. But now it does say in here that annually, people would have to re-enroll, they'd have to turn in their application each year to re-enroll and so, but we would grandfather in those currently attending and not charge them tuition. All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is executive session and I do have a need for an executive session to discuss personnel, the employment evaluation or termination, distraction against an employee of the school district and student issues on student discipline.
In the motion to exit to executive session, Mr. Wade, one second. Mr. Jowers, any discussion, all in favor?